Live from Channel 36.
In beautiful downtown West Hollywood.
It's my WeHo world.
Yay! Hey, we're back! Welcome to Take 2. Welcome to Take 2 with the three candidates running here. Lindsay Horvath, James Duke Mason, Larry Block. Welcome back to the show. Welcome to Part 2. Public address. And if you're not registered to vote, please call West Hollywood City Hall. Find out where you can register. Get registered to vote. It's a very, very important election coming up. We have three seats that are open, okay? And we've got many questions to get to yet. And we're gonna start right off with questions. Here we go. Thanks, everybody, for staying. I know this is, it's January the 15th and it's...
16th.
16th, there we go. And it's 7 o'clock and people could be eating and having cocktails and all that other fun stuff, but here we are. Okay. Here we go. This is for Larry Block and James Duke Mason. I noticed that James Duke Mason and Larry Block are very friendly with existing council members. I think Lindsay Horvath is too, but they just wrote this. I see this from their Facebook and Twitter accounts. Why should I feel that either of those candidates will act any differently if they are elected, since they are already, obviously, friends with the existing council? Wanted to take it.
That's a little ridiculous.
It's ridiculous.
A little ridiculous.
Why?
Because, you know, friendships and acquaintances, we all live in the same city and we all, a lot of people know each other. I can only speak for myself that I think there may be a little bit of a thorn in the council side for standing up to issues and I've never let up on that. So the question of friendships, compromising friendships, is not true. I've asked John Homan to lunch, but he's never responded.
What'd you ask him to lunch to?
Well, a few times, but...
Maybe he didn't like the restaurant.
But I've had coffee with Abby Land and I've certainly been with Jeffrey Prang, been very helpful. John D'Amico, we had dinner once in my life. And, you know, there's, there's not too...
It is what it is.
It is not too cozy of a relationship where it compromises any vote.
But it's a valid question.
You have to have a working relationship with people anyway.
I do, but it's about Duke.
Look, I'm in this race because, you know, I wanna turn the page on all the negative politics and petty, you know, issues of the past. For me, I don't think we need to relitigate the same old issues from 2011 or, you know, from whenever. I think we need to focus on the future. And yes, you know, I probably have big disagreements with all the council members. In fact, I know I do.
Wait a minute, didn't I see a picture of you with a silver spoon in your mouth just recently?
Yeah, well, yeah, you know, that's a perfect example, you know? There was an article posted on WeHoVille, or not WeHoVille, WeHoNews this morning.
WeHoNews.
An op-ed about how I'm supposedly this, you know, entitled rich kid.
I'm gonna clarify something, because I don't know if our viewers know. James Duke Mason is, oh, my hat's so silly. Silly man. James Duke Mason is, your mother's Belinda Carlisle.
Yes.
From the Go-Go's. Your father is Morgan Mason. And your grandfather is James Mason, the famous actor, okay? Who did Lolita, The Star is Born, Journey to the Center of Earth, and the list goes on and on. So that's where they're coming up with this, well, you're entitled, a privileged person.
I think unfortunately, especially in the state of politics today, both, you know, in Washington and Sacramento here, well, Sacramento's doing pretty good with Governor Brown, but, you know, and West Hollywood's doing good too, except that there is this, you know, incessant, you know, petty, you know, political vibe. It's a vibe. I mean, it's been, you know, Lindsay's been through it. You know, I'm starting to get a taste of it, you know? And, um, look, I, you know, I think unfortunately, um, yes, that's the way politics is, but I don't think, West Hollywood is better than that. And my thing is, yes, I may have disagreements with all the council members, but, uh, you know, look, we're people. We are going to serve together on the city council, and my job is to work with them, with all of them. And that means that, uh, you know, you have to be civil and you have to be, create, you know, constructive relationships.
Lindsay, did you wanna chime in?
I think it's time to set aside personal differences, end the bickering on the council, and bring people together. A good example of that, I'm endorsed by both county supervisor Sheila Kewell and council member John Duran, who, and anyone who's followed local politics recently, they're kind of on the opposite sides of things. And so, you know, if I'm able to bring those two together, that's the kind of bridge building I wanna bring to the community and how I wanna address issues moving forward.
Do any of yous have any endorsements from any periodicals or papers like the Beverly Press or anything?
I don't think they've done that yet, but I wanted to intervene on something that is really important about the election, about all the candidates. About three years ago, I had an idea for term limits, and I knocked on my neighbor's door, and I asked him to write the language, Steve Martin, for term limits. And the whole idea of it at that point, the arrogance of the city council was great between Homan not shaking D'Amico's hand, Abby Land's conflict of interest, and you see she's left the council, and, um, and...
She's not running.
That she's not running.
That's why there's three seats open.
And then Jeffrey Prang...
And Jeffrey Prang dialed it to city...
Yeah, but then the question with the, um, with the credit card abuse and everything else. And when I was talking to my neighbor, we started this, we thought, you know, let the voices of the people rise to the community. So that, anybody can come serve the city council for 12 years, for a period of time, from the private sector and serve their community. So really, the whole idea of it was for a kid like Duke Mason to be allowed to serve and not be discounted because of his age, because, you know, screw all the politicians. Really, the question is people and voices of the community to be able to serve on the city council and represent our interests. So everybody should be on a level playing field and everybody should have an equal chance, except the incumbents, because there are two sets of rules. If you're an incumbent and you're running to raise money, to get consultants, and to be able to get there, they all wanna know who's, where the bread is buttered and everything else, so it's a...
It's a valid question. It's a valid question. I can see people's concerns with it, where, you know, if you already know everybody and you're seen at parties together, and I believe John D'Amico had a meet and greet for you last Sunday.
He opened it to everybody. Lindsay's is tomorrow?
Yes.
It is tomorrow. So it is so that you work and you...
I decline. I just think, you know, I'm my own man. I don't want anyone to think that I'm on the...
I belong to no one and no one belongs to me.
Exactly. The mayor and I have a great relationship. We had dinner the other night. You know, I've expressed my disagreement with him on many important issues, and I've also expressed my agreement with him. So I just want people to know that I'm going, I'm running to turn the page, to focus on the future. I don't represent, you know, one faction or the other. I just want to build results and to create results for the people.
What's the one issue you disagree with them on?
Well, I would say my main difference, I'm gonna make it, you know, very brief, but I would say, you know, maybe on the Homan and Land side, I have some disagreements with them in terms of policy. On the D'Amico and Duran side, I have some issues with their temperament. You know, I think maybe, you know, going back to the 2011 campaign, you know? I just think we need to focus on constructive dialogue, constructive dialogue. And so, you know, I'm a mix, I'm a blend. You know, I wanna come in and work with everybody and create, you know, create results for the city.
Good answers. Next question. We're gonna move this along here. This is, okay. Last year, West Hollywood Sheriff's Department was involved with several killings of innocent people who only called for help. On another occasion, they shut up, they shot up a liquor store and almost killed the clerk who called 9/11. County sheriffs are known for being too quick to draw and unsympathetic to people who are paid to protect them. The city is now facing millions and millions of dollars of lawsuits. Do any of you candidates agree it is time for West Hollywood to have and regulate their own police department? Signed, Wandering on Mulcahy. Larry?
The tragedy on Palm Avenue was terrible. My own employee was handcuffed as he was going into the building. The police were outside and they said he could go in with his groceries. He got up to his room, he walked out to see what the commotion was, and he got handcuffed and taken out. Even after the murders, they left him handcuffed for an hour. I led the vigil for John Winkler, because I...
Thank you, thank you. I asked our cop, you're the first person to mention the man's name.
Yes, and, you know, and Kirkland had died, you know, a couple of weeks before that. But I led the way, because we should have new policies on the way the police enter our residential buildings with force, like a militia. So, and sometimes that gets that way, but overall, I think we have a pretty good police department that, and our crime rates are pretty low compared to LA as a total.
Lindsay?
Well, there's a new sheriff in town, quite literally, and I think that that sheriff...
New sheriff in town?
Yes.
Is it male or female?
It's a man.
Oh, it's a man.
And so he, you know, he's very, he's really good. He has a lot of experience coming from Long Beach, now coming to the county...
What is his name? Jim McDonald, right?
Yes.
That is Jim McDonald.
And so he's, uh, he's been really remarkable in Long Beach, has a great record of success there, won overwhelmingly in his election. And he's, he campaigned on cleaning up the department, and I think that is his intention. But I think if we, if we are seeing that the sheriff's department isn't living up to our community standards, we need to get involved. When I was on the council, I actually created a community response team to domestic violence. It was the first ever in the city's history, because I wanted us to strengthen our policies on domestic violence and make sure that we were opening up the conversation. A lot of times when we talk about domestic violence, people think that's a quote-unquote "women's issue." But the truth is, we're seeing incidents between men and...
Well, men are married to men now.
Exactly, and especially in this community, and that's something that you need to...
And you're gonna have it, it's gonna come up.
Right, and that's something we need to be talking about. Yes, exactly. You know, we have to, we have to deal with reality. We have to deal with the realities that we're seeing in our community. And so I wanted to open up the conversation and make sure we're actually addressing the issues and, you know, with the realities that we're seeing in our community. So the sheriff's department was a part of that conversation. We brought together social service agencies, local law enforcement, the courts, and talked about the actual issues that we saw going on here. And recently, one of the, one of the murders that happened in the community was actually the escalation of domestic violence. That's gotta stop. You know, I'm a domestic violence consultant, and that's something that, you know, I work on day in, day out, and that's something that I really wanna focus on when I am on the city council.
So if we want, could, do we have the right to say we want to form our own police department and abolish the West Hollywood Sheriff's Department and create West Hollywood Police that are, go by a whole new set of rules, or how does, how would that work?
Do we have the right to? Absolutely.
Absolutely.
But what we need to be mindful of is the cost of what that, what that means and is creating a whole new department...
What's costing us now? We get a bill for this, to run this, right?
Right now, about a quarter of our budget is spent on that, on public safety. Most cities who have their own police departments spend at least half of their budget on public safety. And to what result? A lot of people move to the city of West Hollywood because they perceive it to be safe. So, you know, we really have to make sure that every dollar that we're spending on public safety is being used well, if we need to increase our budget to, to address some of the issues where we're seeing negligence, and we have to do that. But, but replacing this department with another one that we haven't really fully thought out isn't necessarily gonna solve the problems that you're, that you're raising.
No, no, but...
We need to be better engaged. There's a reason we have that contract. It's to negotiate, making sure that our city's core values and the things that we care about in the city are being attended to by the sheriff's department. And so we strengthen our relationship with them that way.
Duke, did you wanna add anything?
Yeah, I concur with both Larry and Lindsay. I think, I mean, absolutely, obviously, there's an issue. Obviously, there needs to be more accountability.
Obviously, when innocent people are being shot by the sheriff, it's, and these people are suing the city right now. And who pays for that? We do, the taxpayers. How, you know, it's somewhere...
Insurance.
Huh?
We're insured.
We're insured?
When you can't trust that your police department is, you know, protecting you and looking out for your own interests, I mean, that's a problem. Having said that, I'm not 100% sure that creating our own police department is the answer. I think, you know, perhaps there needs to be broader public dialogue. We need to maybe create a task force. I think we should explore the idea, but obviously, my, my preference is to, you know, choose the less complicated and less costly option.
Larry, you said we're insured for that. So we're bonded for that, so...
Well, we spend about $18 million on the police department. Out of our budgets, about, you know, $78 million, so, and we just, we just allocated another $500,000, but it comes out to a lot per person for public safety. So I'm against our own police department. It's a lot to manage.
It is, yes.
Part of the fiscal responsibility of the city is the fact that we contract out these services that we don't have to manage and employ ourselves. We don't have to deal with pensions, we don't have to deal with other issues that complicate budgets. And, and at least we know our fixed revenue stream that we need to have, and it's consistent, and that's what's helped us be a financially sound city, by, because we are able to contract out that police department.
Look, my iPad and my computer and my phone were all stolen from my apartment on Fountain Suites there just three years ago. And the police department did an incredible job. They came...
You mean a new one just didn't magically appear, like this?
No, I never got the iPad.
Sorry, I had a fuss to you a little bit.
Never had the iPad, got the iPad.
Okay.
Got the computer back. They, they found it. They got, they found the, they found the computer. You know, the guy, they found the guy on the street, he was sitting on, you know, my computer at Starbucks. They had the HRC bumper sticker on it, so they were like, mm.
That's a ball. Stealing your computer and then using it at the local coffee shop. Wow!
He was sitting there, you know?
Oh, my gosh!
But it was half ripped off.
They were looking for those phone numbers.
But, you know, the point is, I experienced this personally.
They're looking for your black book. There's a day in the old day.
I think honestly, again, not to, not to keep going into the minutia, but honestly, I'm, the reason I'm running is because I don't think there's enough civility in our politics. I think the police department absolutely has not done a perfect job, but I also am willing to give credit to them when it's due, and they did an incredible job for me and as a citizen, I'm, I feel pretty good about what they did for me.
Question, answer, next question. Sorry, I gotta move on, there's some important questions here. This one here is, aha! This has to do with Section 8. So many new apartment buildings are going up. Whose job is it to make sure that Section 8 units are being fulfilled and being fulfilled throughout the years? I've been waiting six years to get in with no luck. Signed, Weeping on West Knoll. That's a really good question.
I just went to the Detroit Bungalows a day or two ago, and I met with the 11 tenants who are in fear of being evicted.
Right.
I met with a woman in her...
Just to clarify, where are the Detroit Bungalows? On Detroit.
On Detroit. And I met with this, you know, this woman, Del, and her husband Jim, and she actually said to me, "I'm concerned that I'm gonna be homeless." And that, I mean, that was a really emotional moment for me, because I'm like, "Oh, my God, we're in West Hollywood," and I'm hearing a woman who's lived here for, you know, I'm not sure exactly how she'll...
They wanna tear down?
Yeah, I mean, some of these tenants have been there for 37 years, and they're talking about tearing it down, and, you know, there's some concern about them not, you know, being, you know, getting first preference. I mean, they wanna be guaranteed. You know, once the new development is built, they'll be able to go back. And the reason I bring that up is because I talked to one of the tenants, Dr. Love, and she said that, you know, the hope is, unless something, if it doesn't work out here, Section 8 may come to, to help them.
Lindsay, anything you wanna say on that?
On Section 8?
Yeah. Who's man, who's making sure that, that these, these buildings are going up? Who's making sure that the Section 8 people get in there?
Well, any housing questions, especially when it comes to the rent stabilization ordinance, things like that, Section 8, you can contact Elizabeth Savage at City Hall.
Elizabeth Savage?
Elizabeth Savage.
At West Hollywood City Hall.
At West Hollywood City Hall.
You have an extension?
323-848-6510.
848-6510. Elizabeth Savage.
Yeah, she runs, she runs the department, and if she's not the person to answer the question that the specific questioner has, she can direct them to the right person.
And just one more note on this. Is there a formula? If you're building X amount of units, do you, what is the formula that you have to have X amount Section 8? Is there a particular formula in place right now in West Hollywood?
When you're...
Like, if you build 20 new apartments, do you, how many Section 8s do you have to have if you're building 20 new apartments?
Well, it's, you're, you're talking about a lot of different things. If you're talking about, you know, building new luxury condos, the affordable housing component that comes with that is not necessarily Section 8. What you're talking about, um, there are two, yeah, there are two different things.
Rental units, just a rental.
You're talking about through the West Hollywood Housing Corporation.
Right.
Yeah, okay. So the, so Section 8 that is created, West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation addresses, is the city's operator of affordable housing units that are created by the city. And the list that was referenced in, in the question is a very long list, and actually just recently was it open to include new names? But there are hundreds of names on that list already, and so the list, the list is very long. So it, you know, unfortunately, that, you know, it's an issue that we've been talking about. Affordable housing options need to be opened up. And actually, while I was on the council, I created 56 new units, and in one, in one project alone, we approved almost 80 low and very low income units for...
Thank you. Larry, on the Detroit Bungalows, this is really being driven by fear.
I spent time there as a disability board member, former chairman. This is an important issue for persons with disabilities. I was there when Jesse Slansky handed out the envelopes for, to give people notice because they really got caught by surprise and driven by fear. They've been guaranteed that they will be allowed back in, and then they use this clause, eligible, as if maybe they would not be locked in. But last night at the planning commission, there was a brilliant idea proposed about the Doheny project that Jason Aluline is building, and there are 12 units available of affordable housing there, and there's 12 units to be displaced on Detroit. A compromise was offered where the people would be able to move into the Doheny unit and have the option to move back there, back to the new building. In this particular case, the affordable housing, unfortunately, there are 12 units.
Yeah, yeah.
But in the future, when they...
Oh, that's a very big number.
When they build this building, there's gonna be 44 to 66 units for more people. So it's, what's going on in Detroit's terrible, but, but it's part of, it's part of what everything else is going on.
It's heart wrenching.
And people have to move, you know, that, that people, and then come back in, and there's no, city has no transitional housing, and that's the main problem. We don't have any transitional...
It's one of the biggest things that, why people are really have their eye on this election. I wanna move on to the next question. That was some very good answers, yeah, but there's some, still some really good questions here. They're all doing wonderful, by the way. Like, you've done this before.
No, you're clearly a pro, though.
There we go. I think this is a good question for Larry. What, what do you do, what do you, and if you think West Hollywood City Council is, should be doing directly for the LGBT community? What could they be doing directly for?
Well, we do sign Disabled on the Long Break, so this person is disabled. We do so much, we do so much. I've advocated different things when it comes to LA Pride, which would be called Christopher Street West Hollywood, Christopher Street West Parade, and more, more, more events for seniors, perhaps at Plummer Park for seniors, and expanding the reach of LA Pride, and also to include peoples with disabilities and more events for women who often feel left out. But I think, I think with our city council, we've taken pretty good care of the LGBT community, and I am the one who fought for that rainbow flag on City Hall and embedded...
Yes, I wanted to just throw in there, they were thinking of changing it, which everyone really got an uproar, including myself. I mean, like, don't, don't, don't mess with that, you know? Don't, that's like saying, let's take our American flag and let's just move the stripes around a little bit, make it a little bit more aesthetically appeasing to everybody. So Lindsay?
Well, that's exactly, not exactly. What happened was the rainbow flag was on City Hall that I donated, okay? And then they ordered the rainbow flag come down, to come down. And then the compromise that was struck was that we would embed the rainbow colors and use the logo footprint on the new city of West Hollywood flag. And so we did adopt the new flag about one year ago, January 23rd, or the vote in February. And so there's a new city flag that includes the LGBT footprint of the rainbow on it.
The very premise of my candidacy is, you know, this is not just specific to the LGBT community. The very premise of my candidacy is that we are not looking after the communities that make us who we are.
I feel there's many people that...
We are not looking after the gay community. I mean, yes, we may be a pro-gay city, but I don't think we're maintaining the identity of our city in the way that we should. I don't think we're looking after the Russian community, the seniors. I don't think we're looking after the core groups that were here in 1984. The way that I think we can do something about that is rent and development, because those issues are at the core of the kind of people that we have here in the city, who can afford to be here. Young gay people can't afford to live in this city. It's becoming impossible. I mean, practically all...
Unless they're, they've come from a very, very wealthy family.
No, I'm very lucky. I am incredibly lucky.
There we go, I'm sorry. Back to your sober...
I am incredibly lucky, I am incredibly lucky and blessed, because honestly, you know, when I came out and I wanted to move back here as soon as I finished high school, West Hollywood was where I wanted to be. And so often, you have people who wanna move here, and again, not just, not just young people, older gay people. I mean, there are people being evicted, you know, older gay people who have been here for many years, just like we discussed, Greg, who's been at Detroit Bungalow since 1977, I think, and he's in fear that he's gonna lose his home.
Of course he's in fear, of course he's in fear.
So that's unacceptable.
I'm in fear.
That's just unacceptable. It's, you know, it's unconscionable and...
Let's move on to another question. All very good answers, once again. I'm gonna just throw out my question here, but, because, Plummer Park, they, everybody, they're gonna move forward with a project with Plummer Park, even though it seems to be unanimous that, that the residents up there do not want it. What, what are your thoughts on it? Lindsay?
On Plummer Park?
Yeah.
Well, I think that Plummer Park is an incredible resource for the east side of the, of the community.
Long Hall, Hollowed Hall.
Well, and, and they're important. I mean, the city has a deficit in meeting spaces, so those, those buildings provide a very necessary resource for the community. And, you know, we've seen families grow up there, we've seen the elderly, you know, go out and enjoy each other's company there. It's a, it's a space that accommodates a lot of different populations, so it's a really important resource.
So it's gonna be done. They're definitely gonna do something with that part, correct?
There's no plan right now.
There's no plan?
There's no plan.
We spent money on architects and many plans didn't come across the table, huh?
The redevelopment funds didn't come through, so we're back to square one. And if we are gonna do anything, we have to figure out how to finance it.
Yeah. The proposed plan can't be funded, just as Larry said. The, the funding isn't there. So I think when we're talking about what's to be done...
Plummer Park, east side people, no worries for right now.
Well, it's, it's not about no worries, it's just making sure that whatever we want to do with the park, if there's anything to, to be done, actually has appropriate funding, which right now there isn't.
I wanna get to the last question, we're gonna cut, because this is important.
The main concern, though, that's really important, the problem with Plummer Park was the process, was the community included.
Right, it was shoved down the front, right.
And what happened, and there's a whole long story behind it, so, how we did Tara, how we did West Hollywood Park, and how we had new visioning processes, that's what I advocate for the new Plummer Park, that we have a new visioning process.
Save Tara.
If it ain't broke, don't fix it, that applies to Tara, that applies to...
Let's get to the last question, you guys, it's really great, you guys have some incredible answers, okay? And this is, here's a really good, "The crosswalks on Santa Monica Boulevard and warning signs do not seem to be working. Three pedestrians died last year being struck in the crosswalk by vehicles, and one this year. A lady was hit, she wasn't, she didn't die. What are your thoughts? Curious on Crescent."
There's a lot that needs to be done, and it's no secret that Larry's done a great job in raising that, the, the profile of that issue. There's, uh, there's more signage that needs to be created, there's better lighting that needs, that needs to be installed immediately.
On King's Road, I don't mean, I mean, but on King's Road, south of Gelson's, okay, there's a little park there, and, sorry, I used to live down there, and there, the triangle sign lights up with the, around the entire sign, why don't they put that on all the signs? You see that?
Oh, I'm completely frustrated, there are lots of options that we're not exploring. In Santa Monica, they have the lights in the sidewalk that help elevate, that help light up from the ground, so people can actually see, and the city has been saying for, for years, "Oh, we can't put those in, they don't work, that, you know, they're a liability."